January 29th, special select board meeting to order. With us tonight, on my left is Flo Smith and Joe Staub. On my right is Tor Nelson and Carla Newwiesel. With us also is Cali Streeter, Town Treasurer, I'm Brad Town. And any additions, Tor?
Yes, we have two. First, we do have warrants to be signed tonight. And also, I have a bunch of signatures and documents I need everybody to sign.
Public comment?
Is this the only opportunity to comment on?
Unlocked.
Oh, I'll comment in about everything now, or?
Oh, you can if you want.
Okay, I don't want to jump the gun.
No, no.
I'm reading this, "I have no problem with the 1% tax."
Yep.
I didn't hear what he said, did you just say the 1% tax? I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, for the, for the mortgage tax?
Yeah, I have, I didn't hear what you said earlier about, earlier.
I just asked him about the, what was on the, for the special meeting, for the hearing.
Oh, okay, because when you said a public comment, I don't know if this is the only opportunity to speak.
Yeah, well, if you want to speak, speak.
Oh, so just go ahead and speak. Go ahead, I don't want to jump the gun here. I don't know the process. I don't have a problem with the 1% tax. And I'm looking, I was reading the, you were in the paper yesterday about the property taxes and trying to make cuts and everything. And I can appreciate all the property taxes and all the things that you're doing, trying to keep that down. I have an issue that's a different concern, though, about this building that we're doing down at the town center. And I have a question about that, is it appropriate to ask about that now? Okay. My concern is watching what's going on globally and watching the migration that's coming across the border and watching people being shipped here and there and everywhere and deals being cut to bring people into hotels and getting paid by the federal government. Is there anything that we can do proactively to prevent a situation where a deal will be cut if this building gets built down there at the town center so that we don't wind up in a situation where we have completely unvetted people coming into the town?
Clarification, the buildings in the town center are mostly commercial. The hotel that was talked about is over at Comfort Inn.
Okay.
They are going to add extended stay, was it 90 rooms?
90 to 100, yeah. Rooms of extended stay.
Okay.
Are you, I'm talking about Foxhorn.
No.
I'm just talking about in general, in terms of what I'm seeing going on globally with the situation with the migration. Where, like, you look, take a look at New York City, and they're filling up all the hotels with illegal aliens who haven't been vetted. And my concern is that we're going to build up units, I think this building that we're going to make for apartments, 30 units, was it?
Yes, that's Foxhorn.
Okay, my concern is that, is there anything, any way of preventing a situation where a deal will be cut, where we'll be bringing in people who are coming across the border into town, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
Because that will bring a problem, it will, yeah, we'll be making more taxes, we'll be bringing in more tax revenue if that building gets built, but we could have real big problems down the line. So that's, that was a concern of mine.
I totally agree with you on that. And I don't know what, if anything, we can really do proactively on that, but I, you know, I always look at the flip side, is that affordable housing is, you know, such critical, I don't know what I'm trying to say right now, need right now, that I just don't have the opportunity to house them.
Yeah, I have no problem, like, if we're housing our own, you know what I'm saying? And we have a problem, you know, that we have to solve.
And the Foxhorn is a, is a build of, what's the organization?
Downstreet.
Downstreet Housing, and they typically, I don't think that they would, that's something that they typically would get involved in. I mean, I think it's really geared toward workforce housing. The hospital has expressed a huge need for housing located nearby because oftentimes the lower-paying jobs can't afford housing and cars, and that allows them the ability to walk to work if they need to. So the idea, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but based on the builder and the people that operate the facility, I don't think that would be a concern.
Right. No, I think, I, Downstreet.
In the short run, anyway.
Downstreet, I think, is more interested in long-term.
Yes.
Not short-term.
Yes. And meeting the needs of Vermonters, I think, is really a key thing for them, so, okay.
What would be considered low-income welfare, maybe?
No.
This is a workforce housing, it's not, like, geared toward, which is, I think, is different than some of the subsidized housing. I'm not an expert in this area, I don't pretend to be, but my understanding, this is what they're calling this is workforce. And there's some market rate housing in there, which means that they need to keep up the facility or the market rate units won't get market rate.
Okay, basically, from my own reading and stuff, from my own experiences and stuff, when they do build low-class housing, what they're doing is they're trying to change the workforce from local neighbors to immigrants, migrants, because they're working with low-range age range, and that's something you have to watch out for. I mean, whoever owns shares, the companies that are building this benefit from it, you know? There's a lot of behind-the-scenes deals going on with everything. It's always been like that, just, anyway.
Well, I think sometime along here, we'll have, we'll have, ask Downstreet to come in and give us an update, and we can express your concerns then.
Well, I'm interested in basically people who have shares, the companies we're talking about, you know, is it on your stock exchange?
I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's a...
I think it's, it's not a, it's a Vermont, I haven't heard of them.
I'm not sure what type of entity it is, I believe.
I think, I think they're...
Are they a nonprofit?
Nonprofit, maybe.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, so.
So they're not on the stock exchange?
No, no, no.
No.
No, I don't not believe so either.
Well, so, do you have anything else you want to add?
Next one?
Yeah, I just wanted to come down and speak about my concern about the building and who is going to be coming into the town, you know? You want to bring in the tax revenue, but you don't want a problem, you know? And you don't want a downside that you're not looking at here, if there's any way of preventing that.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to, to convening the charter change hearing. Or motion?
I make the motion to convene the charter change hearing at this time.
A second.
A discussion, hearing none. We are now in the public hearing. Berlin is considering the following changes to its charter. Shall the Berlin Town Center be hereby amended as follows? Section 32, powers of the town addition, paragraph D, as follows. The town Berlin Select Board may assess a 1% sales tax. The town of Berlin Select Board may assess a 1% rooms tax. And the town of Berlin Select Board may assess a 1% meals and alcohol beverage tax. This tax be imposed under the authority, this section shall be collected and administered by the Department of Taxes in accordance with 24 VSA 138. Revenue received through this imposition of tax shall, in this section, shall be designed for capital projects within the town. Any questions?
Is there a point online?
I don't, you know, nothing online. I guess, if I may, what we're looking at doing here, for everybody's benefit, is currently, you know, Berlin's population is around 2,900, but during the day, our population swells to around 12,000 between all the employers in town, the hospital, and all the commercial enterprises and everything like that. All these, you know, out-of-town people are using the services of the town, we're having to maintain and plow the roads and, you know, provide a police force and everything like that, but they do not provide anything towards our property tax base. So all of the town expenses, you know, which we're going to be talking about later on tonight with the, you know, with next year's budget, is basically entirely borne by the property taxpayers of the town. This, these three components of the options tax, the sales tax, meals tax, and rooms and alcohol tax, is an opportunity to get these out-of-town residents to contribute towards the required expenditures of the town. We're looking at, and this would provide, based on the State Tax Department, about $600,000 a year of additional revenue. And our proposal is to use this for, as the chair mentioned, capital projects, which is vehicle and heavy equipment, you know, the snowplow trucks, the police vehicles, the road graders and loaders and things like that, paving of the roads, culvert maintenance, bridge maintenance, all sorts of things like that, which typically we spend between $300,000 and $500,000 a year on, which is not enough to keep pace with the expenses that we should be to keeping these items in good condition. So we don't, not faced with a situation like the Lover's Lane Bridge, where, you know, due to the deferred maintenance, it's now been closed for four or five years at this point, and probably at least another year before it's reopened. So we can be more proactive in getting these, these needs taken care of.
And I'll just add that I think being proactive reduces the cost overall, because when there's an emergency, like when the culvert fails, it's going to cost more than if it was, you know, done on a schedule, so.
Here again, the State Tax Department estimates that between 3/4 and 85% of this revenue would be paid by out-of-town residents. So we're, you know, so we're definitely looking to capitalize on that. Now, keep in mind, some things that are not included in this, which are not subject to the state sales tax, are groceries, clothing and shoes, drugs and medical supplies, motor vehicles, gasoline and diesel fuel, and residential farm, residential and farm utilities. And probably the biggest, you know, question is, so we do implement this, and we've got this additional revenue coming in, how can you be assured that we, as a select board, are spending this money in a responsible manner? And keep in mind that any expenditures of these funds will still be, you know, vetted to you through the annual budget voted at the town meeting, so you'll still have the opportunity to weigh on those expenditures, including not making, you know, any or that much that year and saving it for an additional rainy day fund. Some day-to-day impacts of this fund, you know, you go to the, you go to the grocery store down the street and you buy, you know, you buy some chicken and potatoes and lettuce and bread, you know, you're going to cook dinner for tonight, invite me over if you would please. You would pay nothing extra on that, because those items are not taxed, you know, the sales tax, they would not be subject to the local options tax. Likewise, let's say you go out, you go out to dinner and you go to a fast food restaurant for your family, and you buy four meals, you know, burgers, fries and drinks, and that comes out to $40, you would pay an additional 40 cents on that meal for the options tax. And if you do that once a week, every week for a year, be a total of 21 additional dollars over the course of, of course of the year. You know, that's, that's the power that this, this 1% can provide to the town over the course of a year. I do see a question in the chat, how do I... For my folks at the Wayside Restaurant, I would imagine it would be significantly more than 600,000. We would hope so, and with the, you know, growth coming into the town, we do expect that number to increase, but based on the numbers we're getting from the State Tax Department, that's, that's what we've got so far.
That's interesting, because the Wayside is in both towns.
Yeah, where do they pay the tax?
The restaurant part is in, is in Berlin.
The cash register is in Berlin.
The parking lot is Montpelier, but the, even the so-called Montpelier side of the, of the Wayside is still in Berlin. I've been told. So I do have a question for the Wayside. I know you have a fundraiser coming on tomorrow night. If you wanted to jump on and say anything about that?
That would be wonderful.
I don't see, you're muted, if you, oh, here you go.
Sorry, I'm not very good on Zoom.
Yeah, we're, we're working with Union Mutual, they have a Penguin Plunge team for the, to raise money for the Special Olympics. We're working with them tomorrow night, to donate a portion of the proceeds from the evening sales.
Oh, nice, that's wonderful.
So I'll throw it out right now. I'll pay $200 if I can pour a glass of ice on Alex's head.
I would let you do that for free. I would be willing to pay you to do that.
Oh, no. Anything else concerning the public hearing? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close it.
I make the motion to close the hearing at this time.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, charter change, public hearing is closed. Okay, just the year 25 budget adoption.
So, um, we hammered a lot of things out last week, and the final numbers come in at $4,558,276, so Flo found a error in my spreadsheet, and got it corrected, so, thanks for coming.
Thank you, appreciate you both.
So you are, so really no changes to the budget itself from what we discussed last week, and I will make the motion to adopt.
You're second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to go on record as, I, I know we have to cut, and I'm not opposed to the cuts. I do, I did send an email that you all saw, that I just had concerns that, due to the uncertainty, I thought might be worth considering financing a large purchase equipment as opposed to paying for it, to provide flexibility in the budget. And I know I'm, this is new to me, I acknowledge that, but I felt like it would give us a little bit more flexibility, and so this is a precursor to my vote.
Well, my, my counter to that is, we do have the funds reserved for this piece of equipment.
Reserved, but not restricted, I understand.
They are, they are restricted, they are restricted to highway equipment.
Oh, so I...
So it's not, it's not restrict, it's not restricted to the loader versus a grader or something down the road, but it is restricted for highway equipment.
And how does that work? I didn't understand that.
When, when you put forth a budget such as this one, once the town votes...
So this was from before?
Yeah. The money is then locked into what is, what is...
Okay, I was understanding it was being part of this new request, so I misunderstood that then.
Okay.
So I thought, I thought it was money we were setting aside, new money that we were setting aside.
And one of the things we want to remember, even though, even though if you were to borrow money for that, or for whatever piece of equipment, or whatever you want to call it, with the interest rates today, you are going to be, it's going to be costly money.
Right, and I recognize that, but I guess my thought was, you know, that can be, you know, assuming everything goes well, that can be paid, you know, you don't have to go to term, you can pay it off. It's not something that you're set, that's set in stone. So it was just, you know, I struggled with this all weekend, because I was such, was so traumatized by that last meeting. And I did still put my petition in, but, anyway, so that was, that's my only comment. And if that's restricted, and it is reserved by a previous vote, then I will support the budget.
Did you happen, get a chance to talk to Connie Banks today, or?
I didn't hear back from her.
Okay.
So I emailed community, because that's who we do most of the stuff with, and she was going to look into it, but hadn't gotten back, so.
Any other comments on this?
So just to clarify, the reserve is the 253,000? Am I correct on that number?
The 253,000 for the loader will come out of reserve, previously reserved funds, correct. And then the implication on the tax rate, then we've got ARPA funds and other things we'd be looking at as well, but, you know, that'd be a discussion in June or July.
Exactly, wonderful.
Okay, thanks for participating.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all your efforts and all your thorough review and asking the questions.
Thanks.
And I'm glad you put your petition in.
Any other? Joe? Any other comments?
No comment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
A resounding aye.
Motion carries. March 24th, I mean, March 2024, town meeting warning adoption?
So, this is pretty straightforward compared to other, you know, based on other years, the Article 2 is the, the budget we just adopted, Article 3 is the charter change local options tax, option, option, Article 4 is the, the, at this point, the appears to be a tentative agreement with Geary Hotels for the purchase of the 1.5 acres. Article 5 is authorization to power for flood repairs for the coming year, it's just, it's just authorization, I mean, it's not a sure thing, but it's just a flexibility for the select board if we need it. Then Article 6 through 26 are the appropriations, including Article 6 to 424, 296 for the fire department. And these, and the above were all on Australian ballots, voted on that Tuesday, the 4th. And then, starting with Article 27, is the traditional floor vote for town meeting on Saturday, March 2nd, the moderator reports to town officers. Article 29 is the quarterly payment of the property taxes, and it should be noted on here that February, February 15th is actually a Saturday, but luckily at our, at our last meeting, the chair asked our candidates if they'd be willing to work on a Saturday, and they both said yes, so I guess we're going to be having people here. Or, the treasurer stated that as long, anything that's in the lockbox when she arrives that Monday morning will be counted as on time. Then Article 30, shall the voters of the town of Berlin call upon the United States Postal Service to establish a post office in Zipco within the town to service its residents and businesses? So that's something new. And any other business that may legally become before the meeting? If our town clerk would like to add anything, or?
I don't have additions, thank you for summing that all up, that was perfect. Yeah, if you all agree to this, don't have any changes, I'd just be looking to get signatures today, and then we can order ballots.
That's wonderful.
Rachel, is there an absentee ballot?
There, there's going to be, it hasn't been printed yet. The only ballots we have on hand right now is for the presidential primaries, so those are available for absentee right now, and then these should be done no later than February 14th.
When do you have to request them? Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
What was the current?
I was just going to say, when did you have to request absentee ballots, why?
You can request them right up until 3:30 the day before the election, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And assistant treasurer appointment, would we care to go into executive session and come out and vote?
I think it probably would be a good idea to go into executive session quickly, and I will make that motion, in terms of executive session regarding the assistant treasurer appointment, under 1 VSA 313A3, and I do anticipate a decision tonight following this executive session.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're in executive session. Okay, we have an, we have a person of, for, or we have interviewed a person for assistant town treasurer, and we would like to offer Shelley Rue the position of the assistant town treasurer. I have a motion on that.
I make the motion that we hire Shelley Rue for assistant town treasurer.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, thank you.
And, let's see here.
You've got warrants?
You've got warrants.
I make the motion to approve payable warrant 24G17 with check number 23681 to 23690 in the amount of $75,529.05. Also payroll warrant 24-17 for payroll from January 14th to January 28, 2024, paid on January 31, 2024 in the amount of $67,910.56. And the Berlin Volunteer Fire Department selections, selections orders from November of 2023 as well.
My second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and what was the other one?
I have a lot of signatures I need from all of you on stuff.
That was, that was...
Previously approved, just...
But not signed?
Not signed, yeah. And Mr. Chair, I did receive an email regarding the options tax during the meeting from Cedric Sandborn, just says, "Food for thought, the 1% sales tax will also be collected from each business in town as businesses pay the Vermont sales tax on both their electric bill and their heating bill, oil slash propane. It's not just free money collected from out-of-town shoppers." Thank you, Rick Sandborn, so just reading that for the record.
So it's only residential and farm that's, it's not collected on the electric? Because in the state thing you read, it seems like it said something about electric and heating, because that must have been residential and farm?
I'm going to say residential.
I'm going to say residential and agricultural utilities.
This is yours.
Thank you.
Well, I'm assuming
Do you want to sign this?
I'm assuming that the tax, anybody who's using the purchase as an expense. Like if you buy gas for your business, it becomes the business expense.
That's true.
Right.
So. So that would, that'd be the only reason that you would collect a tax on fuel, heating fuels, I don't know.
Now don't we all feel good of everything that's been accomplished tonight? And everything leading up to it, to her. Put in a lot of effort.
Tori, I left this here for you. I broke the bad news to Tom.
About his signing commission?
Oops.
I got to sign this from two places. So I take it, Tori, I signed it somewhere in here?
Let's see if those were already all signed. I think they were.
I don't see any place else. Uh, there was.
I broke pine hills to three of my neighbors. They were unscathed. Then I asked to borrow their newspapers.
No.
We actually, we used to get the newspapers delivered, and it just expired, and now there's an offer being made. My husband said, "We should get that started back up again." Yeah, I agree. Shelley was excited.
Yeah, that was good.
We haven't adjourned yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
I didn't think so.
We're still, we're still, we're still putting ink to paper.
Still on the record.
Okay, anything else to come before the board tonight?
Technically, there is no German on the agenda, so I don't think we can adjourn.
Want to bet?
Nice try.
Entertain the motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn tonight's select board meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.